This is a presentation on Boston Public Schools and Boston Unity Soccer Partners' proposal for White Stadium, which is cited on assessing parcel number 1203486001, which is separate from and surrounded by Franklin Park, which is located in the neighborhoods of Roxbury, Dorchester, Matapan, and Jamaica Plain.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. The group came to us back in January and gave a presentation. The design has emerged and changed, so this is an opportunity just to present. We do not plan on having any kind of a vote today. This is just a presentation to learn where it is. So it will come in a future month after it receives other approvals in the process back to the commission. So it's just a chance for the commissioners to be aware and know the status of the project and feel free to ask questions or where things are at this point. So with that, I will pass it off. And Icy, thank you for joining us. Sorry, I just saw you on there. Icy Washington, our other associate commissioner, has joined us. I will pass it off to the proponents. As the court reporter has asked, if you please just state your name for the record before you present. And with that, we'll pass it off to the proponent. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Woods. My name is Dion Irish, Chief of Operations. Thank you all for being here today. It's my pleasure to welcome you to this meeting. I am honored to stand before you to share updates on the White Stadium renovation project. Today, we're here to share new and exciting details about this project, which would show careful reflection, planning updates based on the valuable feedback we've received from community. This project is a testament to our commitment to listen to voices of our residents and integrating their insights into our plans. The City of Boston's Park Commission holds a vital responsibility to review all constructions or alterations of buildings and structures within 100 feet of a public park or parkway. This duty is crucial for protecting our parklands, preserving the natural beauty of our urban green spaces, and fostering environments that encourage community building. This renovation project embodies the principles, embodies these principles. Our goal is not just to renovate a stadium, but to create a space that enhances our parklands and strengthens community ties. By working closely with community members and stakeholders, we aim to develop a facility that will serve as a hub for sports, recreation, and community events, bringing people together and fostering a sense of belonging and pride. I want to extend my gratitude to the project team for their diligent work and dedication to incorporating community feedback into the planning process. Your efforts ensure that this project is not only well thought out, but also truly reflective of the community's aspirations. I look forward to the discussion today. Jennifer Epstein, the managing partner for the Boston Unity Soccer Partners, will now say a few words.
Thank you, Dion. Good morning, everyone. I'm Jennifer Epstein, the lead owner of Boston Unity Soccer Partners. We are excited to be with you again this morning. It's been several months since we last met, and we're excited to show you an updated vision for the renovation of White Stadium that has been closely studied and refined through many public meetings and conversations with our partners at the city, the Parks Department, Reed Hildebrand, and the many users, neighbors, and community custodians of Franklin Park. As you will see in today's presentation, our collective vision contemplates a white stadium that blends in with the broader Franklin Park landscape, provides programming and amenities for park users, and opens up the area immediately south of the stadium, which is currently fenced off to the playstead. Our design teams have worked tirelessly to develop a holistic vision that incorporates all of the principles of Franklin Park Action Plan and numerous agency and public comments and suggestions. We welcome your feedback today and will continue to work with the city to make a project that fits seamlessly into the park context and the goals you have for improving the park experience for everyone. Now I'll pass the mic back to Dion. Thank you very much to everyone for your time today.
Thank you, Jennifer. And next slide. Thank you. So we're going to jump right in. Today, we will share an overview of the project and its importance. Then we will talk about the project's intentional alignment with the Franklin Park Action Plan. We'll move to share how community feedback refine the project. And lastly, we will dive deep into the landscape and architectural design principles that we will use. I'll hand it off to Dan Oliva from Jones Architects, who's working on the BPS Athletics Hub.
So, thank you, Chief Irish. So I am Dan Oliva. I am the project manager from Jones Architecture. And we wanted to start off a bit today by talking about, we led the feasibility study, our firm, with the Public Facilities Department. We led a feasibility study back in 2023, which was focused on assessing the needs onsite for Boston Public Schools Athletic Department. So we'll talk a little bit more about that today, but we wanted to start, if you can just flip to the next slide, by talking a little bit about the facilities' conditions today. So, you know, what you see on screen here is we're starting with the East Grand Stand. So this is a couple interior shots of what the East Grand Stand looks like today. It was damaged by a fire, you know, many years ago now, and has been in a kind of a state of disrepair ever since and in an underutilized state. Really kind of no lighting, unsafe to occupy, so deficiencies there. The West Grand Stand is currently occupied by Boston Public Schools Athletic Staff and used by students. However, it is in a state that really needs kind of dire need of modernization. The existing locker rooms have no accessible access, not up to code. The athletic equipment storage area that distributes equipment to schools citywide is up on the second floor and is in need of an expansion. Athletic offices are in need of a building systems upgrade. They have very little functional heat, AC, or ventilation. There's no real concession presence. And the grandstands that are used have limited accessible seating, have a number of code issues as well, and over the years have experienced a fair amount of water damage present inside and outside the grandstands themselves. And there's also no, no public accessible restrooms for park users onsite. So just to go to the, to the site that is immediately around the stadium, a couple images here that just show some of the challenges that were presented with and what we uncovered during the study. Just starting on the left, the pathway network and locations of gates are kind of restrictive. The paths themselves are in a state where that really needs resurfacing and could be kind of better served with a better sense of wayfinding and access. The image in the middle is really showing some ponding that is right out just to the south of the stadium. So there's some stormwater issues onsite that we need to deal with. And lastly, on the right, the south end of the stadium is currently fenced off and has experienced some overgrowth over the years, making the kind of visual, the visual presence from the playstead area into the stadium to be obscured or blocked. And we want to open that up, as you'll see with the new design. So I'll pass it off to Chief Irish now to talk about, a little bit more about how these, how this study and what we looked at in 2023 will start to shape the city's goals for BPS Athletics with this project.
Thanks, Dan. Dion Irish again. So based on the results of the feasibility study of the stadium, we understood the conditions of the stadium and developed goals for the future of BPS Athletics at the site with the insight gained from students, coaches, and staff. BPS's goals for this project are to renovate and modernize the athletic and administrative functions that are already happening at White Stadium. In turn, these amenities and resources will also be accessible to park visitors. For context, participation in BPS Sports dropped from 44% in 2019 to 34% in 2021. While students have continued to win championships over the years, increasing sports participation is a major goal for BPS Athletics with this project. These facilities include new state-of-the-art locker rooms, new athletic equipment, storage, office space, and an eight-lane regulation track. Next slide. BPS envisions that White Stadium can therefore serve as an athletics hub to provide other amenities that will strengthen the student athlete and the community experience, because it will include strength and conditioning facilities and offseason programs, athletic training staff to teach students, athletes about injury prevention and how to treat injuries, event space for awards ceremonies, team dinners, lodge meetings, more venues to host playoffs or sporting events with large attendance numbers, and space for student study in between practice and games. So how does a partnership with Boston Unity Soccer help meet these goals? This partnership allows the renovation to be a transformative opportunity for our students and the greater community, because it will revitalize White Stadium as a hub for sports and community events. It introduces premium natural grass for the best playing experience for student athletes. It provides dedicated professional maintenance to keep White Stadium and the surroundings safe and clean. And it changes the narrative by creating a new standard for sports facilities for student athletes in the city of Boston, matching or exceeding amenities, I would argue, anywhere in the country for a public school system. Next slide. There are additional benefits listed here that we also believe our residents deserve, a boost in community pride and unity through the shared joy of sports, creating new professional pathways for young people through mentorship, internships, and scholarships, providing role models for girls in sports. Athletic participation is linked to higher grades, more self-confidence, less rule-breaking behavior for young boys and girls and women. It also accelerated the implementation of the Franklin Park Action Plan, and it adds amenities to support other lodge events at Franklin Park. Next slide. And we can see these benefits reflected in the range of programming that will be available at the stadium year-round. While practices may have been canceled when it was going to rain in the playstead, we will now be able to host practices and games for various sports. Next slide. Here, we share a sample schedule for the month of August. While we will continue to refine the final programming schedule, this reflects the team's shared goal of tripling the amount of programmable hours for BPS usage, improving the space and experience for existing community events, and expanding opportunities. As you can see, the green reflects that BU, Boston University Soccer Partners, represents less than 10% of the available field hours. Next slide. Here, we take a closer look at one week in the program when there is a national women's soccer league game. The team will play up to a maximum of 20 games a season, including championship games. This is what it could look like if there's a Saturday game. As you can see, with careful planning, even on the day of a game, we could host a BPS game or meet in the morning and prepare for a game at night. Next slide. This is what a non-game week would look like, 100% used by BPS and community members of this beautiful new stadium. We are so excited to be able to expand the hours of the stadium. Currently, the stadium is open 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, but in the future, it will be open 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM on weekdays and weekends. Now I'll hand it off to Dan Fernandez to talk about the stadium's alignment with the Franklin Park Action Plan.
Thank you, Dion. We're really excited to be here with you today and really focus on how the Franklin Park Action Plan has really been a north star for this project. Next slide. So the Franklin Park Action Plan is a plan that was developed by the Boston Parks and Recreation Department and completed in 2022. This is a project that has received national awards for the rigor and intentionality associated with the work identified here, and also a reflection of numerous community meetings that helped to shape the work that is embedded in that document. Next slide. As you're well aware, the plan has many, many different recommendations, but we wanted to focus today on sharing a couple of the recommendations that we feel most aligned with the opportunities that we have here with the White Stadium renovation. The first is, the plan clearly identifies that making connections and activating edges for the community is a critical priority, ensuring that there's clarity to those entrances, new pathways, and vegetation that really welcome the community into the park, and also really thinking about activities at the edge of the park and close to neighborhood centers. We also see this as an opportunity to amplify that many of the recommendations associated with movement and creating opportunities for pedestrian circulation, bike circulation throughout that park to improve both those path and trails throughout. In addition to that, we've also really focused in on what are those magnet destinations. The Franklin Park Action Plan does a beautiful job illustrating what the future of those destinations could be. And in order to ensure that those are destinations that continue to be visited by the public, we must address those basic needs, looking at opportunities within the White Stadium renovation project to improve restroom access, lighting, provide water, fountains, and again, directional information for how to navigate the park. We also know that Franklin Park has a series of other strategic opportunities underway, including the overlook and the renovation of the Alma Lewis Playhouse, which currently has been awarded an RFP to explore what the future of that site could be. And we're really excited to continue to build on the synergy of many of the improvements associated with the overlook, with the bear dens, and with the future of PBD Circle. In addition to that, I'm sorry if you go back one more slide. We know that the health of this park is not just in ensuring people can move through the site or are able to access park entrances, but it's also about ensuring that the ecological health of the park remains an important aspect of the long-term viability of this park system for our neighborhoods. So it's really important for us to see how this project can support the ecological health of the park overall and also help us understand how we can look to remove barriers and stitch back together the ecological health of the park. Next slide. And so all of these pieces are being led in multiple aspects by the Parks Department. And those elements I just shared really focus on some of the project improvements, but there's also sort of an implementation roadmap associated with the plan that really lays out some key strategies. Many of these include the management of the park in terms of parks operations, including full-time staff and a park administrator, an MOU that will be part of the Boston Unity Partners Program to address management considerations, and also really thinking about maintenance overall in the park and thinking about our Franklin Park Trust, and understanding that our mayor, Michelle Wu, has also committed to six new additional maintenance staff that will be dedicated to the park and a series of other capital improvements, which really represents the largest investment in Franklin Park over the last 50 years and last for mayoral administrations. Next slide. So although today we're going to be talking to you about White Stadium, it does not mean that we're not thinking about this in the context. And this document has been a guiding source of inspiration, of recommendations, that are guiding the work that we are doing here and ensuring that we're not just thinking about White Stadium and this project as an isolated object, but within a broader system and connected to many of these other opportunities associated nearby. Next slide. And to do this, we wanted to ensure that the action plan builds a foundation for where this project can go. But we also understand that the renovation of White Stadium was not contemplated in the original action plan. And due to that, we wanted to engage directly with Reed Hildebrand, the creators and lead landscape architects of the action plan, to ensure that we were able to create a series of design principles that can guide the work that is part of this renovation and can help to shape the project's future, to enhance its connection to the park system overall. So with that, I'll hand it over to John, who will walk us through those architectural and landscape design principles.
Thanks, Diana. My name is John Kett, the court reporter. If I could go to the next slide, I don't need to tell this commission how significant Franklin Park is. And as Diana said, we were brought in to help understand how to build really a case for managing change through a preservation lens for the park. And so obviously, that starts with an understanding of what makes this place significant and the level of integrity that it has. And Franklin Park has great integrity today. And its significance is not just based on the Olmsted legacy. It's based on decades of grassroots-led community support that have brought the park back from some challenging times and have really engaged and activated it with a lot of community efforts. So we have looked at this, next slide, through the Secretary of Interior Standards, including the guidelines for the treatment of cultural landscapes, where because we are managing change in this landscape, and this is the landscape that has evolved quite a bit since its inception, obviously, this is conceived of as a rehabilitation effort, which is the only principle within the preservation standards that acknowledges the need to alter or adapt for contemporary use. That does not diminish the importance of the historic character. And so the first guideline, the first step of those guidelines is to look at what are the character-defining features of this place. Next slide. So in the playstead specifically, that starts with the overarching spatial qualities of the playstead, which is a flexible expansive valley floor, an open lawn set between the ridge lines of the Long Crouch Woods and the overlook which sits at the edge of the wilderness. Those topographic features are reinforced through the putting stone outcrops that are, as we all know, distinctive to the region of the world and appear both within the wooded edges, but also within the playstead fields themselves. Next slide. The other really significant character-defining feature of this space is the relationship of vegetation to that topographic condition. So the oak hickory woodlands, which define the Long Crouch Woods and the wilderness, and transition towards a series of informal groves, which are directly related to the circulation network that's established within the playstead and providing shade and also spaces for people to occupy along those edges, which reinforce the sense of the stadium as floating within that space. Next slide. So out of that assessment of, which I'm summarizing here, of what the character-defining features are of this place, we've developed a series of design principles, which have been developed in conversation with the design teams and really guide the work moving forward, which you'll see throughout the rest of this presentation. The first two principles are really about protecting that historic arrangement of the playstead that I described, understanding the continuity of that topographic relationship between the ridge lines and the valley floor, and then how the stadium, and this is direct language from the Secretary of Interior Standards, any renovation or rehabilitation within the space needs to avoid, minimize, and mitigate any adverse effects on those overarching visual and spatial relationships within the park. The third principle is about respecting the existing views and relationship of some of the key destinations. Most importantly here, being the overlook, which had great significance within the Olmsted Plan. That's the primary point, occupying the edge of the playstead and overlooking all of the playfield, but also views from Long Crouch Woods and other spaces within the playstead. The next two principles are specific to minimizing the impact of the stadium building volume itself. The first principle, which you'll see how this has been incorporated, was really to conceive of the stadium as a single structure whose scale and character will have an impact on the playstead, but not allow that to trickle out beyond the boundaries of the stadium itself, specifically to minimize the impact that that has on the presence of the overlook, recognizing that the overlook shelter was the only building that Olmsted originally introduced into the playstead, and that all future architectural interventions really need to be deferential to that important move. The fifth, sorry, the next principle is to restore the visual and physical continuity within the playstead. This is a key tenet of the action plan, as both Dan and Diana have mentioned. It's about removing physical barriers that impact the way that people move through the landscape of the playstead and reinstating some really important visual connections that have been lost today through overgrown vegetation and some of the fencing that's been built within the playstead itself. The last two principles here, the first one is about prioritizing pedestrian movement within the playstead. And this is directly related to what Dan was describing with the way that barriers exist today and thinking about just the importance of the circulation of the main circuit drive within the larger park. There is a loop within the playstead that's a very important circuit for people to be able to move around with continuity, and that that's supported through shade. This is about human comfort moving through this space, which relates to the last principle, which is obviously acknowledging the significance of the trees within this part of the park, not just trees as individual specimens, but trees as groves that reinforce that primary circulation while maintaining the continuity of the larger open center of the playstead itself. And with that, I will pass that, I believe, on to Dan.
Actually, I'm going to jump in quickly. Dion Irish here again. I just want to talk quickly just about community feedback and how that has helped to refine the project. Throughout this process, we've hosted a long series of public and small group briefings, because we knew the design needed to be responsive to community needs. Next slide. As you can see here, the team has sifted through over 900 public comments, over 40 community meetings, 23 of which were public, and 40-plus internal design meetings with key partners in this work, like Reed Hildebrand. I'll now pass it over to Tamara.
Thanks, Chief. This is Tamara Roy. I'm a principal at Stantec Architecture, Boston. And with me is Christopher Bridle, a landscape principal with our firm, and also Andre Vega, our partner architecture firm, Moody Nolan Stadium Experts. So yes, thank you, Chief Dion. We had started, you know, in July when the RFP came out, doing many public and neighborhood small group meetings, over 50 in 2023. And what you're looking at here was when our public engagement and agency engagement really heated up, starting in January of 2024. And we had many, many public and small group meetings, which resulted in hearing public comments through the BPDA email system through public meetings that we had with all of these agency groups. I think the 900-plus is actually a low number. It's higher, but we couldn't exactly gauge how many. But we continue to hear suggestions and feedback flowing in, including from, you know, this meeting and others. Along with that, one of the important pieces of feedback we heard rounding into 2024 was how we really needed to collaborate better with the east side and the west side design teams. And I'm the west design team leader. And so we engaged in having two to four collaboration meetings per week with several of the folks listed here in order to come up with what we were presenting to you today. Next. And during that feedback process, we heard these major themes. And I'm not going to go through all of the words, but certainly transportation was an issue. And we had many meetings that were just specifically around transportation with various neighborhood groups around the Franklin Park area, as well as just open transportation meetings. And that final version of the transportation plan will be memorialized in a TAPA agreement. In terms of quality of life, we have dug deep into noise and lighting minimization, cleanup security, etc. cleanup security, et cetera, all of these things which are deeply important to the abutters surrounding the park. And those will be memorialized in the BPDA Cooperation Agreement and shared. They were shared at the IAG meeting on June 5th. For community benefits, there's a lot of robust community benefits and we've actually had several meetings just devoted to those benefits. And those will also be memorialized and shared at the IAG meeting. And then a unified management process, right? We are actively exploring what those structures are that align with the Franklin Park Action Plan. And we will continue to refine those and formalize that agreement soon. Next. So the last time we saw you all, and some of you are new, so we didn't actually meet directly with some of you. That was January 29th, so almost five months ago. And these were the major themes that we heard from the Parks Group, which is very important, the holistic stadium review. As I mentioned, it was hard to see the full picture when you were only viewing the west side. So we did establish all of those coordination meetings. On the Grove, we had several different options that we showed you the last time, but all of them had a structure south of the stadium that was serving concessions and storage and other things. And we were told it was extremely intrusive to the overlook and disconnected from the playstead. So we have really overhauled our design in that area, and I will show you that in a more visual slide following this one. The scoreboard had such an impact, it at the time was actually two-sided and facing the playstead as well. And that was, we were told to avoid projecting digital images toward the park, obviously. The site coordination, making sure again that we're all coordinated. So our landscape teams, east and west, have also had many coordination meetings to try to push further some approaches to tree planting, stormwater utilities, et cetera. The transportation aspect again was similar to the public feedback we got. Let's make sure that we clarify the bike and pedestrian routes and understand how the shuttle drop offs and ADA access work and the emergency vehicle routes. Maintenance cleanup security, we've already talked about that. That's been an overarching theme, but also came from the Parks Commission as well, making sure that we we were, we had a holistic vision for that. And then respecting those Franklin Park features that John Kett just went through to make sure that we were in, we were being sensitive and respectful to managing the change that's going to happen. Next. JP, I believe you're taking this slide.
Sure. Good morning. My name is Jean-Paul Charbonne. I'm an Associate Principal with Crowley Cottrell. The landscape architects for the BPS part of the White Stadium. What we see on screen are some of the design principles that both design teams carried forward with the design changes. We will walk through each design principle and walk through each of those steps individually. Next slide. In the previous, when the commission had last seen this project in January, what we see here is the current state of the, was the site plan and building massing for the stadium project. Next slide. Since there were a number of changes since the commission last saw the project, I like to walk through a series of drawings which diagram the stadium improvements and expansion and how they affect the park and more specifically the playstead. The east and west teams have worked together to refine and consolidate the design. With these changes, we believe the new stadium has the opportunity to give back to the playstead. The drawing on the left illustrates the stadium as it is today with the playstead shown in green. The areas in white within it are areas we believe feel like they are inside the stadium, inside the perimeter walls, grandstands, and the fenced in area to the south. The middle drawing illustrates the expansion of the track from six to eight lanes and providing a regulation sized soccer field. By preserving the historic west clamshell wall, note the track and field are expanding into the footprint of the existing east grandstand. The drawing on the right illustrates the new stadium in blue. Heights vary, but this drawing represents the footprint of all new structures. The east and west teams have worked to contain all building elements within the volume or shape of the stadium. Jones Architecture in particular have refined the east grandstand, gained efficiencies with the new approach and have been able to reduce the footprint. Next slide, please. So what does this all mean? This drawing combines all the layers shown previously and highlights in purple where new buildings expand into the playstead beyond the existing walls, fencing and grandstands. But note the areas to the south. By removing tall fencing, overgrown vegetation and large expanse of asphalt paving where the existing basketball courts are located, here the new stadium can give back to the playstead and create more open feeling lawn. When viewed together with the stadium expansion, overall, there is a net increase to publicly accessible parkland in large part due to the new design and thinking of Boston Unity's Grove, which will be described in later slides. Next slide.
So I'd just like to go one at a time through the the moves that the design team has made. We call this our consensus site plan. So starting with number one, which is a bullet on the right hand side, we've actually reduced the width of the west grandstand since you saw it in January and reduced the size of the width of the field so that the east grandstand could pull in a bit in order to save number four, which is the pudding stone outcropping, very important there on the side of the east grandstand. We've also, number three, removed what we called the bean building, or when you saw it, it were various other types of structures we were looking at in the Grove. And so that if you look on the drawing on the right, there are no additions to the stadium building that go beyond the the general geometry and outline of the stadium anymore. And then number five, you can see the amount of pavement that was originally in the Grove. We were bringing the fire trucks around and all the way to the south of the Grove, and that was causing us to create a lot of hardscape. We've since worked on being able to make that one loop that cuts through just south of the South Crescent, which creates that three hundred and sixty degree emergency outline for the fire trucks. And we've done it in a way that incorporates some grass pavers on either side so that the general sense of the width of the paving is much, much less than before. Number six, as JP mentioned, there was a parking lot along Playstead Road, which is very large right now, would shrunk in the January rendering or February rendering as mentioned here, but has been eliminated completely in the new design. Seven, we've consolidated the program of BPS, which was two stories on either side of the east grandstand. And we've spread it around the perimeter of the stadium as all one story wings added to the east and the west, which just creates a more symmetrical stadium and I think a more reasonable relationship to the east and the west grandstand. Number eight, we had a scoreboard when we saw you last, as we mentioned, that was two sided and was just above the South Crescent. And we've since moved it interior to the track outline, which actually makes it closer to the spectators, so it can be smaller and also is now one sided. We have some views of that coming up. Nine, we've replaced all the permanent fencing around the Grove. So now it is just temporary fencing around the perimeter for game days and for other events. Number 10, we've embraced a holistic design, cross-functional use of both of the grandstands. And 11, we've maintained and introduced that eight lane track and created new field sports opportunities and also inside and outside of the stadium. So that's a lot, but thank you. That's how the community feedback and your feedback has been incorporated into the design. Next. And so this is our consensus massing, where you can see that all of the the new and updated program for both BPS and Boston Unity has been tucked together into a sort of elliptical geometry on the north side of the park and the playstead has been opened up to the Grove and that all of that fencing to the south of the stadium has been removed. Next. All right, we're going to just now sort of talk in a little bit more detail about each of the different design principles that we've been following, starting with establishing a balanced design approach. So as I mentioned, while we have a stadium that looks like it's all done by one architect and is completely, you know, just one thing, that we actually still have these two pieces of program, which one is the green for the west grandstand and the blue for Boston Public Schools. Next. And our overarching design philosophy here, which both teams, design teams are truly agreed on and coordinated with, is that we're looking for an a serial, an architectural vocabulary for the redesign that blends these three things, these three eras really, which is the Frederick Law Olmstead era of the eighteen eighties and the qualities that that come with that and the way that it's very cinematic and it's beautiful materials and very naturalistic. And then also being very sensitive to the mid-century modern art deco and Bauhaus elements of the existing stadium of that's white cast in place concrete. And then also the era of today, which is the Franklin Park Action Plan and what the community has said through, through much engagement about improvements to the experience of the, of the plan. Next. And so as we start in the left, you're seeing some imagery, both the west grandstand clamshell wall, which is being preserved and protected during the renovation. But also other mid-century buildings that we are, you know, referencing as inspiration and looking for in terms of their own design principles. And then in the middle, some modern aspirational images that sort of add warmth and sort of respond in different ways to the, and bridge the gap really between the coolness of the mid-century with the warmth of the landscape and the Olmstedian features of the landscape. So that middle is sort of the bridge between those two things. So here you're looking at the, sort of the darker areas in here are the Boston Unity areas of our limit of work. And that includes the west grandstand with the two wings, the clamshell wall, the South Crescent, which is a concession space for the Grove and for the stadium as well. And then these dashed lines, which are temporary seating for our twenty games a year that get implemented there. And we've been talking through with landmarks, with the Boston Civic Design Commission and with our public, in our public design meetings about how we treat the relationship between the historic clamshell wall and everything that we add. So we are looking at, you know, a warmer set of materials that curve and pick up those organic shapes of the, of the mid-century building. And it's a similar approach to the existing, but it's sort of more open and more permeable. If you can see that, that image in the lower left where the current wall is just a sort of solid white cast in place wall. So our new walls are all going to have some windows and they have gaps between them and they're inviting to folks to be able to come into the stadium from various directions. These are two elevations. The top one is the view from internally inside the stadium. And you can see we're using a green palette of seating in order to make it fit within the park. We have a new shade and rain canopy on top of both sides. And that helps us actually contain noise as well. So it's doing really triple duty. And then the wings, which are this sort of warm wood material that comes around and extends to both sides. And then on the bottom, you can see the clamshell wall and, you know, what's hard to show in an elevation is sort of the depth of this. This is a layering that we're doing and you're actually, we're actually enjoying exploring the space between the new, new and the old layers. Next.
Thanks, Tamara. So again, Dan Ola from Jones Architecture. So we, we again are leading the design with the Public Facilities Department for BPS, which is the east grandstand and the track and field. So here we're just showing the colorized area is a representation of our limit of work. So I'll start by just saying, you know, in the center, track and field, of course. And then the grandstands are centered, centered on that track and field with two wings to the north and south, which are left and right on the page here. The wings contain all of the wonderful programs that Chief Irish was speaking about early on in the presentation. Strength and Conditioning Center, Sports Medicine Suite are in the south. Locker rooms and the new locker rooms and food service areas are all below the east grandstand. And then the wing on the north is a student resource center for students to study and meet in between practices as well as the BPS office space. And additionally, we'll talk a little bit about the community room, which is below the east grandstand on the, or the below this view here, you're seeing the uppermost level of the seating. And there is a community room that's on the main or lower concourse of the, of the grandstands. And I think the other thing just to point out there was just the throwing areas for practice are also located out to the, to the southeast corner here. But they're, they are allowed to happen on the inner surface of the field as well. Go to the next. And just to talk a little bit about the elevations. So at the bottom, this is the, you know, an exterior view from Playstead Road, if you are kind of at the center of Playstead Road here. The outer easternmost layer of the building is, you know, similar in tone and texture to the west grandstand, but more of a kind of modern interpretation of that. We're also introducing the naturalistic elements with that kind of wood toned screen wall that you see kind of bridging those, those two wings and kind of flying across the grandstand. And then as you go to the inner portion with the stadium seating, again, similarities with the, the color of the seating and the treatment of the wings being that natural, natural material that we're still, still working on the exact materiality of that with the west team kind of building consensus on that, but this is the direction we're headed. And I'll say another unifying element here that we, we see as a strong move between the two grandstands is as Tamara spoke about the, the canopy design. So this was kind of really inspired by the kind of low slung, soft roof form that you see in the bottom left corner from Olmstead's original overlook building, which of course is no longer there, but kind of a inspirational goal for the, for the look of the canopy. And the canopy's structure that we're looking at is kind of a mast and tensile cable system holding up a fabric that extends over the, over each one of the grandstands, tying those two together. And just to see this in a sectional view, I think we wanted to just explain that there's a real design goal between the two teams to kind of get the, the levels of the stadium and the kind of sectional quality and scale of the stadium matching up. So you can see the canopy heights are wanting to be at, at a similar elevation, even though the programs are a bit different from, from grandstand to grandstand. That top press box level wants to really match up with our top level of seating on the east. And then the concourses are are, you know, very similar in in feel in that if you're on that kind of mid-level concourse, you're able to walk down to your seat or look directly out out to the field. And JP or?
I believe this is me. Yep, this is Andre. Thank you very much, Dan. What we're going to show right now is a an animation of the approach from the north on game day. And we're going to kind of walk through and just kind of explain what that experience is going to be like on on game day. So we can get that started.
While we we have this little break, while Leah gets the animation going, I just want to remind everyone that we're right, we're going a little slowly and need to go faster.
Okay. All right. So here we are approaching from the north. And as you could see, there are temporary banners that are up that will be put up on game day. And we approach the existing white pillars that kind of frame out the opening of the north as the kind of view swings around. You could see buses that are queued up for for drop off there on the right. We come through the the white pillars and there are your gates where you present your tickets and you enter into the stadium. You have the temporary north seating that's right there in front of you that will be taken down when it's not game day. And then we approach the west stands here. You can start to see some of the materiality and the design choices that are being made here. We're going to elevate up these stairs. And then we're going to come to this level, going to swing back over and look at the pitch. And you could see the east stands on the other side. There's a lot of activity here as we move along this concourse level, we're going to rise up these stairs and make it to the upper concourse level. This is the actual middle concourse level. And there's plenty of opportunities here for display artwork. We have some images there of, you know, historic photos from, you know, past events that have happened at White Stadium. So there's a lot of exciting opportunities to do things on this level from a graphic and experiential standpoint. And we're working very hardly hard on that. As we come across to this side of this concourse, we're going to swing around to the backside of the clamshell wall. And we're going to rise up these stairs and then we're going to take a peek back over the park and you're going to be up in the trees. And it really gives you the sense that, you know, we're nestled into this this picturesque landscape of of the park. Now you get to the very top level and you have the stadium out below with really great views for a great soccer match.
Thanks, Andre. All right, next.
This is our design principle number two. We recognize that the stadium should feel integrated with the park and feel like it is of the place dead. And one way to understand how the stadium will look and feel is to view it from the perspective of a park visitor and how it compares, respects, and hopefully improves existing views through and around the stadium. We'd like to present a series of views and animations shown here numbered in an orange. We will work our way clockwise around the stadium, starting from the north and inside the stadium. Views of the stadium will expand and contract and the themes and elements of the place that both old and new will repeat. Thank you. Next slide.
Yeah, so this is the looking at the East Grandstand from the north side of the track, just as it stands today with the track meet going on. Next slide. And now you can see that same view as with the new design, you know, with the landscape trying to spill out into the into the track area. You can see the grandstand and the wings with the BPS program on the left and right. Next slide.
We were backing up from inside the stadium with this view, view number two. This is an existing view from the direction of the school street entrance in front of the island on Placedad Road. Next slide. In the proposed condition and in an effort to preserve as much of the existing stadium as possible, the pillars and box office remain with the new stadium behind. We think the north is an important public place and how many visitors will approach and enter the stadium. Improvements will include a new plaza and removing the solid north walls and replacing them with a more transparent fence. We hope this view highlights that we have worked to provide better visual connections to inside and through the stadium. Next slide. Next, we'd like to show an animation of the approach from the north on a typical day. Leah, could you start? Yes, we are. We are approaching the stadium from the school street entrance. Much of what we see remains as it is today on the historic Carriage Road and through large oak trees left and right. I'd like to highlight that the approach to the stadium is never on axis. As we walk along the curve of Placedad and Pierpont roads, the views of the stadium are constantly changing and the inside slowly revealing itself. And even though the center of the field and scoreboard has shifted out of alignment with the center of the pillars by approximately 20 feet, the shift is barely perceptible. We walk through the north, the new north plaza and enter the north gate. We see the new scoreboard, South Crescent Building and the southern wings at the end of the stadium with views of new and existing trees in the Placedad and Grove beyond. From this point, the track and field will be open and available to the public. Restrooms will also be available. Next slide. We are working our way around the East Grandstand. View number three is from Placedad Road. There is a large rock outcrop on the left and tall mature oaks left and right. Next slide. Though this is where the stadium expands closest to Placedad Road, the large rock outcrop and tall mature trees will help make the stadium feel tucked in. A new secondary park path will provide a connection to the entrances at the East Grandstand and a route around the stadium. We see one of the single story wings in this view, which will house offices for BPS and the East Grandstand beyond. New and existing trees will provide shade, comfort and scale. Next slide.
And then today, this is the East Grandstand again, coming down from the path that leads through the Long Crouch Woods up to the Bear Den. So that's just the point between at the the northeast end of the existing grandstand. So if you flip to the next slide, we wanted to just show this is that same location. And what we're doing to really kind of connect the stadium entry point to the other destination in the park being the Bear Den's is is to really build on that connection and allow a little bit more transparency at that entry location to to start to let the East Grandstand be a little bit more open, legible and kind of porous for the public to kind of pass by and be able to interact with. So if you go to the next slide, we still want to continue that theme of porousness. So right now at the kind of center of Placedad Road where the East Grandstand is, you, you, right now you read that that strong clamshell wall that has a, you know, opaque character to it. So if you flip to the next slide, what we've, we, you know, that grandstand in the new design starts to pull closer to closer to Placedad Road, but what we've really done to to try to minimize the impact or the scale of it is to try to break down the scale of that facade by introducing new stairs at the center, which would be the entry point here to the concourses. The other thing that we're really trying to do is is maintain that rock outcropping out to the to the left on screen here. And you can go to the next one, Leah. And then at the, at the southern end of the of Placedad Road, you can see the the existing stadium just through the trees a bit there with the court on the on the left. We'll show you the new location in the next slide. So the the southern southeast, easternmost wing really will land exactly where, pretty much where that basketball court is. And you will, you will, we're trying to really minimize that, the height of that wing, so it doesn't become too obtrusive to the to that that view corridor at the intersection of Placedad and Seaver. Next slide. And this is the approach from Seaver Street, just a little bit further to the east than the view we're just looking at. So you can't see the existing stadium at all now. But in the, in the new, where the new stadium is and where the new location of the wings are, you'll see, you'll start to see this path path a bit more activated. And the the lower wing there will still be kind of tucked in behind the trees.
Hi, everyone. I'm Chris Bridle, Landscapetech Principal at StanTech. And we are now swinging around to the place dead and looking towards the stadium from the south. This is an existing image showing the the fence line and the temporary elements at the south of the stadium. And it's, as we mentioned before, it's closed off from the place that currently. We go to the next slide. This shows the proposal with new groupings of trees, but still a sense of openness and permeability and porosity towards the stadium. And you can see that the scale of the stadium is still working with the scale of the trees, not sort of overpowering the the adjacent landscape. Next slide. Now we're on the overlook, swinging around further to the west. And again, we can see the fence line closing off the the Grove, what will be the Grove to the place dead. We go to the next slide. And again, respecting the existing mature trees, preserving the canopy, hiding as far as as hiding the new canopies within the canopy, within the tree canopy. And again, showing the openness and porosity towards the South Crescent Building and the Grove. Next slide. We're going to show you a quick animation of the stadium revealing itself from the overlook. We go to the animation. And one of the themes I think of of the stadium is that it's it's not visible until certain points. And this is one of the, I guess, more prominent points of the overlook where the stadium becomes visible. You can see people playing on the place dead, playing cricket. And as we swing around, we start to see a glimpse of the stadium revealing itself through the existing tree canopy. You will note that the overlook is is not represented per the existing or future design, but it's just to show the the promontory and the views from the overlook here. And again, we're going to swing around and see the stadium again reveal itself through the trees sensitively incorporated into the existing canopy. And you can see there the Grove again as part of the place dead. And then we'll do one final swing around, see the South Crescent Building, the place, the the Grove, again, people sitting out enjoying the the place dead and in the far view here, the place dead and that wonderful promontory view from the overlook.
Well, thank you, Chris, for walking us through that. We're going to go ahead and just for the sake of time, move ahead to section number four. If you don't mind, Leah, I know that there's a lot of before and afters here, but we'll make sure we share this presentation after this meeting. But we wanted to jump right into principal number four. So we're going to gloss over the visual and physical continuity, but do want to note here, the broader transportation plan, the opportunities to open views back up to the place dead and some of the design elements associated with creating that porosity and and the adjustments to the scoreboard design itself from our last meeting. But we wanted to end here with the tree canopy and the next generation of growth for the plan. We wanted to focus very much on many of the ecological and planting strategies identified in the action plan, specifically around repairing and restoring the ecological health our forest and specific to our site here, the place that thinking about stormwater strategies and the restoration of the soil composition underneath these heavily used spaces. Next slide. So per John's comments earlier from Reed Helder Brand, we wanted to sort of look forward towards the future and also look back in terms of Olmstad's original planting design strategy. So as you can see here in the image on the left, these groupings of trees that define the edges of the place that was part of the original Olmstad design. And over time, the stadium came online and that sort of buffer has been dwindled over time and you've seen more of that vegetation grow. The action plan recommendations, you know, did call, although not for renovation, for the opening of those view sheds back to the place dead and and restoring that those sort of physical barriers that have emerged. Next slide. So there, one of the key pieces here, right, is that sort of taking the Olmstad design and also the action plan recommendations, we wanted to assess how this new holistic design impacts the landscape. So what you're seeing here is impact due to building footprint. So the trees here are broken down by trees that have been surveyed and are invasive or non-native. Trees that are existing trees in this area, but are in poor condition and and should be brought down. And then trees that are in fair conditions, right? They may be showing elements of decline, but are relatively doing okay. And then trees that are trees that are in good health, but are growing into the walls of the existing stadium today or into the fence lines. And then a series of eight trees that are sort of standalone trees that exist within the broader place dead. So overall, those are the removals that are anticipated as part of the building footprint. We continue to assess these removals and ensure that as we look at utility improvements and other improvements to the place dead, we are trying to reduce impact where possible and also ensuring that any removals are associated with restoring some of those original Olmstad design principles and more importantly, ensuring the preservation of some of these larger legacy trees. And as part of this project, we're preserving 97 trees. Next slide. And just to give you a little bit of detailing to this, some of the trees, of this 22 trees that we were defining here that have to be removed, these are trees that, you know, have are are doing well, but are growing into fences, as you see here in this image or are right up against the existing stadium walls. And especially this image here on the right illustrates that sensitivity with restoring the historic facade and some of the overgrown vegetation right on the edge. And then, as I noted, one of the key principles here, right, is that we are trying to preserve as many of these legacy trees as possible. And not only preserving them, but ensuring that the conditions we create for them in the future are better than they exist today. So for example, ensuring the removal of parking under many of these important legacy and majestic trees and also improving the overall vehicular circulation within this part of the park. Next slide. So I'm going to hand it to Chris, who can walk us very quickly through this and then we'll open this up for comment.
Thanks, Diana. So this is an inspirational image, just showing pastoral landscape with the groupings of trees and the native meadow understores that we'd like to introduce as a long-term plan to the site. Next slide. This shows some of the those same ideas introduced originally as part of the park design, including the pastoral landscape. Next slide. And this is our concept plan, again, a long view idea of how the stadium can fit into the wider landscape, including the place dead and the wider park. And that we're currently working, the client teams are currently working on a management maintenance strategy that will hopefully be able to implement this, but that's a work in progress currently and we'll get back to you on that. Next slide. This shows the idea of the place that being open and we've got sort of two positive forces at play. The openness and pastoral quality of the place dead, but also the long crouch wood wilderness coming in. And we like to transition that landscape into stadium. And again, the stadium is part of that transitional experience from the natural landscape to the more open pastoral landscape. Next slide. We're doing groupings of trees that follow Olmstadian principles and will be adding trees to follow those principles. Again, creating this grouping and this shrouding of the stadium to the stadium is positioned into a natural pastoral landscape. Next slide. We're dealing with stormwater issues currently on site. It's a large, a big problem that we'd like to solve as part of our grading, planting and stormwater strategy. Next slide. And we're reintroducing some more pastoral undulations within the the place dead and grading out the Grove as part of a transition from the overlook. Next slide. And this shows how those all those things come together, the grading, the Grove and the planting design come together in this pastoral composition. and the planting design come together in this pastoral composition, preserving existing trees and preserving views out to the playstead. Next slide. And a wider view, again, showing a long-term view of how we can manage these understory plantings and also groupings of trees and maintain this openness, historic intent of Olmsted and also create this composition where the Grove and the stadium are part of the wider landscape.
So we're going to skip through this section and just great, go right to next steps. Just to highlight here, we're really excited about celebrating the cultural legacy of plays, so looking at opportunities to embed that with art and and other things. And if you go to the next slide, we just want to end here. I think for the sake of being thorough, we perhaps were a little bit too thorough and included too much in this presentation, but really appreciate your feedback. Again, this has been a part of a really robust community process. But we've been receiving those comments and continue to do so. We will, there's a couple of upcoming deadlines related to our review process, but really thank you for your time today. And we'll hand it back to Ryan, who can open us up for questions.
Thank you very much for the presentation from the proponents. I will now open it to our associate commissioners. If they have any direct questions before we go to public comment on this presentation, again, we are not voting on anything today. This is just an update from the January presentation to think how the design has evolved based on community feedback. And to inform the commissioners, obviously, it's a lot to take in. So we will have that. Is there any questions? And again, just so everybody knows who the associate commissions are, they were announced at the beginning. But we are joined by Alisa Birdsey, Jean Ballinger, William Epperson, David Quealy, Icy Washington and Jessica Pierre. Of course, myself, Ryan Woods, as the Parks Commissioner and our staff on this, our Executive Secretary, Carrie Marsh Dixon, and our Chief Landscape Architect, Liza Meyer. So with that, I will turn it over. I guess I'll ask the first question and then we'll we'll go from there. So I'm wondering if the proponents can just explain, as we have some new commissioners on, how this fits into Franklin Park as Franklin Park is the parkland and how this is a carve-out of white trust land. So just if we can orientate the commissioners to understand where the confines of the stadium fit in.
Great. And I can get us started. And I wonder, Leah, if you don't mind pulling up the site plan. We can describe the program a little bit and I'll also popcorn this over to Tamara, who can sort of explain that distinction. So when looking at the site, the the sort of White Stadium project itself sits within what is sort of BPS land. That was part of sort of actions, yes, highlighted here in this sort of dash line in nineteen fifties. So our project boundary is sort of bound to those sort of edges in terms of physical improvements. We continue to assess utility upgrades, which may extend that out a little bit further, but we will come back to you with more understanding on that. But what you see here is that sort of area dashed in red is sort of the lease boundary associated with the Unity Partnership, which is, you know, part of the the soccer program. And then everything outside of that is BPS land. So that includes the the stadium itself. It includes the track and the field. And as mentioned, it's a it's a lease, which means that BPS continues to be the owner of that area, even though it's it's being leased out. Tamara, is there anything else you'd like to add there? But I think that that hopefully Ryan answers your question around those limitations.
Just to clarify that that's called the George White Trust Boundary, Property Line Boundary. Thank you.
Thank you. And just one other clarification. I think it was the last slide of the next steps. Just so we understand, before this comes to Parks Commission again, it's going to go in front of the Civic Design Commission and there's still an Article eighty ongoing review, correct? Okay, this was like before it would come back to the Parks Commission, is that correct?
Correct. That is correct. We will also, just for your reference, have been working with the Landmarks Commission as well. We received an approval with details remanded to subcommittees. So we will be continuing to meet with the Landmarks Commission throughout the evolution of this project and into construction. And we are moving forward with a meeting for the Boston Civic Design Commission on July ninth, and we'll be returning back to Parks Commission on the twenty ninth of July.
Great. I I think I can answer this, but I just want to make sure because it was in the public comments. And I think it's worth amplifying, just asking if the design team can confirm that the field will be natural grass.
That is correct.
Thank you. Other questions from our associate commissioners?
I'd like to comment that I appreciate how responsive the the design that we're seeing today is to some previous comments and concerns, especially related to the Grove area. That seems to have been modified, given people's concerns and also taking into consideration. It seems that there's been a lot more attention paid to keeping the historic quality of the landscape design. I there wasn't any discussion still at from this presentation about, I know something that's of huge concern to the the neighboring communities, which is transportation and how to get the audience of these activities into the park and get them back out safely and all of that sort of thing. Is there someone who can address that?
Thank you for your question. I wonder, Leah, if you don't mind pulling up the transportation side. And I'll go ahead and and hand it over to Chris Bridle and Tamara, who can walk us through the latest plans.
So this is the the latest planet. One of the principles here is, and you can see in the top left, is that we are introducing guidelines or the ideas that were set out in the Franklin Park Action Plan, which is to introduce primary loops surrounding the stadium. It's one of two loops that introduces a pedestrian bike loop as a primary loop. And then the the green here, you can see is a network of secondary paths that actually have a another another level of hierarchy, which we're not showing here. But this is sort of the fundamentals here. And if we then go back to the other slide, we can show how how the additional sort of detail is added to this fundamental idea with with the introduction of shuttle drop-off at the north and the south with TNC access to the east and to the we expect a large amount of people will be traveling via the T from the Green Street T and from Stony Brook. So I guess the sort of the the fundamentals here is to reduce the impact of vehicles to the site and have these surgical interventions for shuttle drop-off and TNC and limiting the amount of service vehicles that will be using the primary loops. So they come in, they use the primary loop for a very short section, then they exit quickly to allow the park to still be mostly or predominantly pedestrian and with the promotion of bike as well. If you have any specific questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
I'm not sure that this adequately addressed the volume of people that would be coming in on a game day. And I would look forward to hearing more about how that would be handled.
Okay. I think we can get back to you on on volumes and capacity. And this shows the actual volumes, but we can get back to you with back to you with details on volumes.
Other questions from associate commissioners?
Ryan, I'll I'll share Commissioner Birdsey's early comments.
Excuse me, who is it? I can't say.
This is Commissioner Epperson speaking. I'm sharing the same comments that Commissioner Birdsey shared early on, that I appreciate the changes to specifically the holistic review. When we first saw this, we were seeing half of the project. I was very concerned about that. Also, when we first saw it, it had a much greater impact on the Grove. So I'm glad to see some attention is being brought to that. I don't know if now is the time or place to hear a little bit more about how this parcel is carved out of Franklin Park and why or why not Article ninety seven would be applicable, but I would expect to hear a little bit about that prior to any votes that is being taken. What I would like to see today, if possible, there's about twenty-six trees, I believe, that are determined in fair or good condition that are marked for removal. I didn't hear anything about tree replacement. I heard preservation, which is great, but I'd like some more information on those twenty-six trees that are being identified for removal. And I'd like to know if we're trying to compensate for that elsewhere in the park.
Great questions, William. And I'll just jump in here with the question here about the tree removals and compensation there. We, as we were breezing through things, we forgot to mention one of the biggest commitments here, which is that we're committing to planting over five hundred new trees in the park. We see this as a tree bank program, which would be available to the Parks Department and the new Executive Director of Franklin Park when when we fill that position to fill over the span of ten years. And this would include, the bank would include commitments for both the tree itself and maintenance and installation associated with it, and then a two-year watering period to ensure that those trees survive once planted. So we certainly, you know, see this as an incredible opportunity to create benefits from this project for the broader ecology of the park and look at implementing other strategies identified in the action plan through this tree bank. As it relates to your question on on sort of the applicability of Article ninety seven, this is something that, you know, we are continuing to work with. And I believe we have Sammy here, a representative from our our legal counsel who could speak to that in in more detail. Let's see, maybe Sammy needs to be be allowed to unmute.
Great. Thank you, Diana. Hey, everybody. My name is Sammy Nibolsi, and I'm outside legal counsel to the City of Boston and the trustees of the George Robert White Fund. In the context of litigation that was brought against the city and the trustees involving the Article ninety seven issue. Some of you may be privy to this. Back in February of this year, the Emerald Necklace Conservancy and a number of individual plaintiffs brought an action challenging the project. And one of the grounds for that challenge was the applicability of Article ninety seven. Concurrent with that complaint, they filed a motion for preliminary injunction, which was fully briefed by the parties and supported by affidavits from the city. And there was a hearing. And then at the end of March of twenty twenty-four, the Superior Court judge issued a decision. And in that decision, the judge agreed with the city's position that the plaintiffs in that case are unlikely to succeed on the merits of their claim that Article ninety seven is applicable to this project for a number of reasons, but most importantly of which is that the legislature passed a special act in, I think, the first time in the fifties, and then there was a follow-on in the seventies, designating the White Stadium Parcel itself, which is kind of north of what we understand as kind of the rest of the Franklin Park Parcel as a as a school building and yard and not as a park. Once it was taken, once the custody, control and maintenance of it was taken over by the Boston School Committee from the trustees of the George Robert White Fund through a series of votes in nineteen forty-nine and and forward. That was the finding of the Superior Court. That decision could have been appealed in an interlocutory matter to the appeals court. It was not. And so for the time being, both the City of Boston's perspective is that Article ninety seven does not apply to the White Stadium Parcel or this project. And so so far, the Superior Court has agreed with the city.
William, did you have other questions or other associate commissioners want to ask?
This is Commissioner Quealy. Similar to the comments of Commissioner Epperson, Commissioner Birdsey, I do still have some concerns about traffic. And in terms of trees, it's great that you're going to be adding five hundred trees. I may have missed this, but directly adjacent to the stadium, are there going to be any trees directly adjacent to the stadium? I can imagine that being a pretty hot area with hardscape and in a dark-colored asphalt, if that's in fact going to be the case. So wanted to see if there are any plans to put trees directly adjacent to the stadium, kind of along the places where people walk, the concourses outside the outside the stadium, if you will. And that's just, I had a couple of other questions, too.
Thank you, David. That's a great point. Leah, if you don't mind pulling up the planting plan and I'll kick us off and hand it over to Chris Bridle, who can walk through this in more detail. But we are looking to plant trees where pedestrians are in performance with the Franklin Park Action Plan Recommendations, which looked at really looking at those groupings of trees, focusing on where circulation and pedestrians are going to be. So we certainly see that as an opportunity. And Chris Bridle can speak more specifically to those strategies at in the round for the stadium.
Thanks, Diana. Yes, I think, you know, part of the principles here is obviously to to respect the groupings and the ideas of this naturalistic landscape, but also make sure that we follow the circulation routes and provide shade as far as possible. So there's, I think, a balance to be struck here as well. We obviously want to make sure that thermal comfort and shade is something that we provide here as part of the design. And as we progress this, we will, we are actually at the moment studying in three dimensions where these trees should be, how we create these vistas and and views, but also create adequate amounts of shade. So that's that's something we're continuing to study and will and can provide more feedback on later.
And and data, just for the clarity here of this diagram, those trees that are in the darker green are trees that are all being preserved as part of this project. And then the trees that are sort of the lighter green are trees that are being proposed as new additions to the tree vegetation in the playstead.
Okay, I am, yeah, I was mostly concerned with trees, if you will, in the in the actual hardscape in tree wells or something like that. So that there's stormwater uptake and there's an opportunity to cool directly adjacent to the stadium as you're walking along. So that's something we'd like to consider.
We do actually, sorry, David, that's a really good point. And we actually, we are actually doing that at the south of the stadium. That's really one of the few areas where there is actually sort of a larger expanse of hardscape immediately adjacent to the stadium. So we're proposing Silver Cell or or an equivalent there with with groupings of trees that will shape the south side of the stadium. Elsewhere, we don't really have expansive hardscape against the stadium. So we're using the the natural soils there to plant trees. The only other exception might be right at the north there, where we have an actual connection from the north.
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
Does that answer your question? Did you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you. Yeah, that's that was helpful. Couple other questions. What's your plan for hiring locally for the concessions? As opposed to having some sort of a large chain entity be be doing the concessions?
Nice to meet you.
That's a great question, David. So I think Kim Miner is here as a representative of the Boston Unity Team and can speak specifically to some of the commitments the team is considering as it relates to concessions.
She may need to be allowed to unmute. Kim, are you able to hop in?
I'm sorry, who's?
Kim Miner?
Kim Miner?
Well, David, maybe while we figure out the, the sort of who can unmute, um, maybe we can go to your next question and and come back to that one.
Sure. Um, at some point, somebody mentions temporary fencing, and I can't remember who it was, but can, can we talk a little bit about what that means? How temporary is that fencing and, and how long will it be up?
Another great question, and I think we do have a zoom in for the Grove area, and I think Chris Bridle, you can walk us through um, what that is. Um, so just to provide a little bit of a recap, David, when we were um, here with you last time in January, there was a proposal for uh, permanent fencing surrounding the Grove area. Um, and we heard loud and clear through your comments and the comments of the public that that really was not a desired condition in terms of opening up those views back to the playstead. So um, the fencing itself um, has been drastically reduced um, to allow for temporary fencing for game days, and um, Chris Bridle can uh, walk us through that in more detail.
Thanks, Diana. So on the left here, you'll see the old plan where um, it had a lot more hardscape and the fence line, you can see just about white dash line, which was intended to be a, an open fence line, uh, but nonetheless, it was a fence line. And we, we have a, a, a different approach now, uh, one which, which, which really does allow this grove to be part of the playstead landscape, and we wanted to also make sure that in order to do that, we don't want permanent fences surrounding this to restrict circulation to the Grove area. And so i- in order to create the, the um, enclosure required for game day events and maybe for other large events, we have established an idea uh, of of placing concrete footings below grade that will follow the, the, the lease line. The lease line isn't actually shown on the image on the right, but there's a, there's a lease line surrounding this space um, that is an offset of this Grove area. And these permanent footings will receive two different types of fences. Uh, one, which is a low-level fence, about uh, thirty-six inches tall, a low, a low, a low-level post, sorry, forty-six and thirty-six inches tall. And they'll be inserted into the concrete footings when required for small events to allow uh, food and beverage to be used within the Grove occasionally for small events. For these larger game day events, the same footing will be used with a taller post to allow panels to be erected to create, to secure um, ticketing entry points that we require. Um, and so the idea is that these will be removed when not required. So most of the time, they will not, they will not be used, they will not be in place. And we'll get this open uh, Grove landscape connected to the playstead.
Yeah, thank you. And one last question, the tennis courts that actually are in the slide you have up now um, are easily accessible by foot for people walking in from that side of the, the park, let's say. Um, there were a couple of slides where they seemed to be there, and then they kind of disappeared. So I'm just trying to understand what happens to those tennis courts. Under your current plan.
Would, would you like to take that one, Diana?
Yes, if you don't mind, Chris. Thank you.
So the, the tennis courts in the current plan, I, this has been a um, uh, I, I think a, a design process with parks and various other uh, people who, who um, uh, and BPS who, who um, who, I guess, uh, utilize this space for other purposes for field and throwing sports. So there's been a balance between uh, creating enough space for the field and throwing sports uh, and for creating a tennis facility. So I think that and someone else, maybe JP could chime in and and elaborate, but the idea, I think, is to relocate those tennis courts to another position or location within Franklin Park near uh, the Shattuck, I believe, where tennis facility uh, can be used for more uh, tournament-like events and allow this space to be used more for BPS uh, throwing sports and other events.
Yeah, and I, I can add to that from the, from the East team. Um, you can see the, the, the tennis courts that are there today um, will, what we've um, talked in some other um, presentat- uh, community presentations that will be moved to the, to the Shattuck. And we're, we're you, we're um, putting two basketball courts in the southeast corner there um, alongside, um, it's kind of faint on this image, but you can see there's a discus um, and shot put uh, and javelin throwing area off to the um, uh, to the southeast corner that um, will fulfill BPS needs for practice and for meets.
And and David, I do want to go back to your, your earlier question with regards to the vendor diversity for the concessions. We do have Kim here uh, who's unable, who's, who's able to mute now, unmute um, to so answer that question.
Thanks, Diana. Can you hear me now? Awesome, great. Um, so, so yes, so we are um, still looking into sort of how we want to staff, but I want to be clear that the team's commitment to uh, fifty, fifty percent um, target for MWBE is not just for construction, but also for ongoing operations. And that includes for engaging vendors like any um, concessionaire or other vendors that we're working with. So that does extend to um, food operations. Um, we've already been in touch with a number of uh, local uh, you know, sort of small businesses that provide food that we might want to work with, both within the stadium itself and also within the Grove um, during our games and perhaps for other activities. So it's very much a big part of our vision here. Um, and we actually have a set spot on our website. So if you're aware of any businesses or staffing groups that might want to work with us, you know, we'd welcome the referrals.
Thank you. Those are all the questions I have for now.
Thanks, David. Any other questions?
Yes, um, Commissioner, uh, Gene Ballinger here. I have a question um, relative to programming of the facility, pre versus post-development. And thank you for the slides that showed sample schedules for August and then weekly schedule. I guess what I'm, I'm trying to understand a little bit better, though, because I think it's been, the case has been made that we'll have clearly a much improved facility, and there'll be greater access to residents of the city and Boston Public Schools and so on and so forth. I also get that um, during game weeks, uh, the proponent would require use of the facility ten percent of the time of that week, and then it would be available for BPS and other use ninety percent. Um, so specifically, White Stadium is used currently um, by Boston Public Schools, by local residents, by other community groups, special events, so on and so forth. I don't have a clear understanding of the extent of that um, uh, in regards to number of hours per week and how much it's limited by the actual condition of White Stadium at present time. So, post-development, um, what are the additional uses from a Boston Public School, local resident, community group, special event perspective um, that will come to bear because of a much improved facility?
Thank you, Gene, for that question. Um, I think I'm, I'm going to go to this slide and then hand it over to Deanne, who can walk us through this in in greater detail, but just to set the stage here, I think um, what we're looking for here and and the way we, you know, we're going to continue to work with this, with the community and uh, with BPS is that usually the BPS sort of, you know, time for use in the field is associated with, you know, right after school um, activities. So that's why you see that sort of two P M to sort of seven P M timeline uh, for when the facility, the White Stadium facility will be occupied by those students using locker rooms, strength and conditioning, et cetera. And then um, there's sort of the times um, above that where, you know, folks are using the track or this, or the steps to do their own exercise or um, you know, wanting to have an area to fill up their water bottle or use a restroom. Um, those are um, pieces that, you know, currently the access is from eight A M to four P M and only on weekdays. And um, in the future, with this renovation, that will be um, open from seven A M to ten P M to the public. Um, which means that, you know, we're, we're accommodating um, greater access to that track and and um, uh, field program. Um, I will say that, um, this doesn't mean that you can't navigate around the stadium itself, right? Everything on the perimeter, um, and with the changes made to the Grove, allow for uses, right, in areas that currently are fenced off um, from the stadium. So that's something that we're also really excited to sort of bring to bear with this project. But um, beyond, uh, please, please do add um, here, um, since you, you know this program intimately.
Um, thanks, Diana. You, you did already hit on some good points. Um, this is definitely a game changer, because the stadium would be available to BPS um, students year-round as well, just because of the new indoor uh, amenities that will be available for student athletes. Um, as we also envision that the co- um, current community events that occur there, like um, Kitty's Carnival, that um, Special Olympics, summer camp for the Parks Department, tho- those types of programs will, will continue to be in White Stadium. Uh, I think with now having an eight-lane regulation track and field, we're going to attract um, more track and field events for our student athletes. Um, and uh, we're also committed to continuing access for, for community uh, events there. So um, with soccer actually really thriving with BPS, I think we have about twenty-four soccer programs going. Um, we, I can see that that will also be a huge part of the program as well as we're investing in in um, our football teams across the district to ensure that um, all teams have a home field and a place to practice, but it all teams actually also get to play in White Stadium as opposed to the current condition. So um, I think there'll be a robust uh, activity in White Stadium and, you know, as Diana mentioned, not just programming for the, for BPS, which is like the priority for us, but also just having the stadium being more available to community members um, during the weekday and on the weekends.
Can I just add to this as well? Um, Leah, if you could find the slide in section four, which is about the programming of the Grove. Um, because the Grove is a really special space, and it's a space that um, you know, doesn't exist today in terms of its scale, right? The stadium is a large space, the playstead is a large space. And so creating this very kind of medium, small space, um, we've been talking with um, many community members, and in our design meeting three last month, we did an open poll um, for the public to ask them what could these, this space could be used for, especially since it now has food and beverage nearby, which again also hasn't been offered in the park before. And we got everything from small to large um, community um, gatherings, uh, movie nights, storytelling, children's um, uh, activities, um, as well as all of the different festivals and other things that are, that are happening, that happening there, as well as winter markets, seasonal markets, other things. So there's just so much possibility, um, Commissioner Ballinger for other types of programming that benefit the community at large. And um, Boston Unity and BPS will be talking with the community to actually develop what that programming is, and it will continue to evolve.
Okay, thank you. Just one really quick follow-up, and this is just specific to the field. So it's a natural turf footprint. Um, it has to be maintained at the highest level to support the women's professional soccer, clearly. Is it understood how many hours a week of additional activity it can support? And is there an increase, is there an increase in Boston Public School programming use of the field and other um, general use by local residents? Uh, in order to, to ensure that the field continues to be in that robust condition it needs to be in?
And I think that's a really great question, Gene. I think we can come back um, to you with some additional detail, but um, as we're kind of identifying here be with the Maintenance and Operation Agreement um, that, you know, we're, we continue to work on with Boston Unity, we do see the ability for that field, that natural turf field, um, with that professional management to be available uh, for BPS students um, during the week um, as part of their practices or to, you know, to Dan's point, um, for, for some of those sort of soccer games. Um, and then, you know, in the sort of, you know, November timeline offseason, we also see this as a place in which that field uh, can be used for those um, you know, homecoming football games um, that um, have been hosted historically at the stadium before.
Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Pierre has her hand raised.
Thank you, and thank you all for this presentation. Um, I'm wondering if someone can elaborate a little bit on um, accessibility, but not just like access to the park, but people who have different abilities, whether it's paraathletes or people who will be visiting the stadium who have different abilities and how the new design will accommodate that.
Thank you so much for that question. So I'm going to hand it to Tamara and Dan, who can speak to many of the accessible opportunities that will be available to students that aren't there today um, as part of this um, renovation.
Thank you, Jessica. Um, great question, and we appreciate it, because we have been working very hard on that since the beginning. Um, and we have a wonderful accessibility consultant called KMA um, who is very well-known in Boston. And we're looking at accessibility really holistically, right? And making sure that folks of all abilities feel welcome, not just that there's elevators being able to get up to each floor of the building. Um, but how did they get to the stadium? How did they get from the, the shuttles to the stadium? Um, how, and, and KMA is also um, in close contact with the Bionic Project. I don't know if you know them. Um, but it's a group of folks who are paraathletes and amputees. Um, and so they've been also filtering in their frustrations with other group venues where they try to go as, as a group and they can't find enough seating to be able to sit together, to be able to bring other folks with them. Um, so uh, it's, it's a, it's a large topic, and we, we are definitely um, really on it. Because we, we, and Boston Unity and BPS um, really believe in it wholeheartedly. That it just, it just needs to be a completely accessible place. So, and we can give you a lot more detail on it, um, but I'd just say, just our commitment is to make it a completely accessible place.
Yes, and I, I can add to that from the, from the East team and the BPS side. I think we know one of the focuses we have um, on the East Grandstand is making sure we're providing, you know, for families to provide accessible um, a more expansive accessible seating than and certainly than what's there currently, but at all levels, um, both the, the track and field level at the main concourse and at the upper concourse. Um, dispersion of, of um, accessible seating. And the other thing, too, we're looking at is um, making sure our track surfacing and um, and, and other accommodations that we need to make um, for track and field events to continue on the Paralympic and um, Special Olympic and the, and all of the other um, uh, events that, that uh, do happen there today. Um, we want to improve those. Um, and a, a, part of that is, is, is looking at the, the track surfacing and making sure where you know, um, accommodating a, a accessible site, like Tamara mentioned, accessible site, accessible viewing um, and accessible access to the track to be able to, to perform and, and comfortably get from a, from a, a bus to a, to the field.
And, and one other point to note here, right, is that um, currently our paraathletes within BPS do not have a home track um, to practice in. And um, with, you know, with the right sort of accessibility measures, so they have to travel about an hour or more to compete. Um, and this really does allow us to provide those services and um, you know, equal access to, to many of these athletic programs um, to, to that audience.
Thank you so much.
I believe all the commissioners have asked questions. If there's any additional ones, I also want to go to our chief landscape architect, Liza Meyer, to see if there's any other outstanding questions on her end uh, to be asked.
Um, thank you. Um, I, I want to just take a minute to talk through sort of where we are and where we're going in terms of um, review by this group and make sure that um, everybody has a sense of, of what's still being developed in terms of, of design. Um, so I think as everyone saw, there's been a lot of design advancement since this project came before the commissioners um, early in the year, looking at some of the early comments from the Parks Department and others regarding site access, limiting vehicular um, use around the stadium, tree impacts, overall circulation for um, Um, people coming to the site sightlines, you know, the core items that we um, that were part of the action plan that are have been. Addressed and and shared back today. And now I'd say we're into another level of of review as the design develops further. So that's looking more closely at the planting approach, the tree selection, the tree placement. Um, fencing details and materials, signage, grading, lighting, pathway design. Um, any entrance modifications, the utilities. So you've heard a little bit about those things today, but that's the work that really is being focused on. Um, by everyone who's reviewing this project and by the designers. And will hopefully be advanced further before this comes back to the commission, but will need to be um, fully advanced and worked out before. Construction begins, obviously. Um, and then simultaneously, there's. Uh, attention being paid on the maintenance and operations and management side of this project because it sits within the park. And that the way this facility is run um, will have an impact on on the park and. Um, so we want to make sure that we understand uh, what. The specifics of that and make sure we get it right to the extent that we can. Um, so there's a shared facilities agreement that is being drafted. Um, either parks will be a party to that agreement, or there will be a parallel agreement that parks has, and that's still. Um, being worked out, but things like um, vehicular, the specifics of vehicular access, specifics around. Um, service and loading, specifics around permitting coordination, signage, advertising, operational coordination. Maintenance outside of the stadium walls, like all of these things still need to also be pinned down. Um, and so that will land in these others with parallel documents that are not necessarily just about design. It's like, how does it work? Um, so that's to come, and I just wanted to make sure that that was out there because I think we're we're seeing a lot of work here, but there's also. Still a lot of work to be done so that we know that we have put in, you know, all that we can to. Deliver this as a project that the commission can approve, um, should they choose to do that. Um, and also know that they're approving something that's been thought through. And so I think we have to make sure we understand. Um, what will come before the commission in a month, what might still be outstanding and need to be resolved before this project actually gets an approval. The checkbox in the ISD system, and then what still needs to be approved before a construction access license can be granted to the contractors who will be working on site. Um, and then what still needs to go into the um, legal agreements. Thanks.
Thank you, Liza. Um, we now will go into our public comment um, section. Of our meeting. Um, I asked that if anybody would like to give any public testimony on this, you just raise your virtual hand. Uh, we will, it will take a second because um, on the backend Quan will have to unmute you, so we can do that. While we're prepping and people raising their hands, I also just want to state for the record, we have received four um, letters or emails submitted to. The Parks Commission. Um, first one was in, all of these letters have been given to the seven parked uh, commissioners. Uh, one was from May twenty-seventh from the Emerald Necklace Conservancy. Yesterday, we received um, two emails. One was from Alma Balanon Rosen. And another one from Sarah Freeman. And today during our um, hearing, we received a additional email from a Jamie Cohen. So all four of those letters um, have been sent via um. Carrie Marsh Dixon to the Park Commissioners um, for their review before it comes um, again to a vote at a future meeting. With that, we will go into public comment. Quana, do you want to lead from here? Because you know whose hands are raised and who you're unmuting?
Yes, I'll unmute Carla. You should be able to unmute now.
Okay, and I go by Kaliga. I legally can use one name if I wish. Went to court to do that many decades ago. Hi, how are you?
Good, thanks.
It's good to see you, Ryan.
You too.
Um, I'm trying to, anyway, um, my phone is old, so I'm having trouble here. Um. First, I want to say I'm a nurse. I've been a nurse in Boston for over forty-six years. I'm also a parent. With three grown who attended BPS schools. And I have two in high school at my old age right now. And my son comes off the bench for varsity and plays for JV. He's going into his sophomore year. At Tech Boston. He's quite a good midfielder. We're a soccer family. There are many better places for this project to go forward without all these convoluted traffic plans. Without all of this damage to the park. Because you're taking down old trees, which will take thirty years for new plantings to even catch up. For you to ruin sightlines, for you to take recreational space. You don't need to do that. You can go to Nickerson Fields, Suffolk Downs, I don't care. We can help you find a better space and a better place to do this. We'll work with you as a as a community. We will work with you. Sorry about that. Um, we will work with you and help you find Unity Soccer because I very much want a women's soccer team here. But I want to make a few points. Number one, the lawsuit is alive and kicking. We are still going forward with a lawsuit. Um, I have been a park advocate for most of my life. I'm on several boards. And to encroach on green space in this day and age when we are in climate crisis. Not in climate change, but in climate crisis, especially in an urban setting, to take one inch of green space. To hurt the natural flora and fauna, which is the beauty and the wonder of Franklin Park. Is a travesty. How can anybody even consider this? Any of the projects that are parsing out Franklin Park? We are here to discuss White Stadium, but there's also um, something going on with the Shattuck. They're moving animal control shelter there. They're trying to uh, put ambulance services there. How can that happen in a park? I would say to you, it happens in a park. That happens to be surrounded mostly by marginalized communities. And if that isn't environmental injustice, I don't know what is. Thank you.
Thank you, Kaliga. Um, and you were perfect on time. I didn't mention, we're gonna try to keep comments to two minutes or so to make sure everyone can do it. She was just under the wire. We thank you very much. Um, Quana, uh, who is next with their hand raised?
Yes, Sarah Freeman. Uh, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Yes, hi. Hi, everyone. Uh, hello, Commissioner. Um, thank you for. Um, everyone, the design is evolving. Um. I won't duplicate what Kaliga said, but um, just in summary, there are valid. Questions that deserve consideration and I say this as. A former marathon runner. I love the idea of women's sports, but I also love Franklin Park and. I think the, there are serious impacts to be looked at with this project, for example. And I'll try not to repeat too much of what I put in my written comment. I thought I might be too late to speak today. Um, in the slide presentation, on the overlook area. There was a comment, I didn't have time to write it down exactly, but something like all interventions. Um, that the architecture should be deferential to the overlook. And comments like heights vary. The enlargement of the building, it's like, I don't know how you can. Think of that as being deferential to the overlook. Um, there were comments like protect the character defining elements. I think probably ninety-five percent of the existing will be gone. In the current plan, the clamshell, the columns and the box office stay. But all the seating, the whole east side, that's not what I would call protecting. Character defining elements. Um. The tennis courts, I've heard a lot of people say they will miss having tennis at that end of the park. Um, and they had good reasons, like one person said, what if you have two kids? And one plays basketball and one plays tennis. You can't keep an eye on both of them. Um. The grass and turf I see was addressed, but I would ask, it's in the current budget. And I don't know on the timing, but it's not a good look to. Be proposing in the budget, putting in artificial turf at a time when you're also saying you need. A grass field. Um, on the east portion. The final diagrams showed it kind of curved. Uh, which is a nice feature, but the earlier slides today showed it looking more rectangular. And I would like some, at some point, maybe not today, clarification on whether. It would have that curve. Um, on the trees, the diagrams show all these nice mature trees, but. With the number that would be removed, the replacement trees are gonna be small. And the drawings don't really show that. And I tried to look the shades of green between the existing and the new. If you're proposing five hundred new trees, there were not five hundred dots. Of that color for the new trees, so I don't know if each dot represents ten or twenty, but. It would be good to get a more um, user-friendly understanding of. The new tree locations, and I do create the, oh, whoops, sorry. Appreciate the uh, replacement efforts if this moves forward. Thank you.
Thank you. And Sarah, that was a great point. I just, I want to uh, figure out on the city's end here. I know the previous administration. Had allocated money for a turf field before a White Stadium renovation came up, so I think it's in there as a holdover. But that's a good note that that gets taken out because it is obviously causing confusion. Um, but there is no plans as of now for an artificial turf field uh, there, but thank you for stating that because we gotta make sure we fix that. Um, Quana, any other hands that we have raised?
No, there's no more hands. Oh, Alan, it looks, okay. All right, yeah, we have two more. I will. Unmute you first, Emerald Necklace Conservancy.
Hi, Karen Monty Brodek, President of the Emerald Necklace Conservancy. Um, most of our work uh, here and with other public partners is defined as intense uh, side-by-side partnership. The Emerald Necklace Conservancy uh, with donated funds has invested over five hundred thousand dollars in the the tree canopy in Franklin Park. And numerous trees around the stadium. Um, that's what uh, you know, our mission is to do, support. Uh, the the city, support the parks, and often that means supporting uh, the the challenging work of the Parks Department. Uh, unfortunately, um, this project as proposed is um. Is extremely problematic for the park. Make no mistake, I know that this commission is appointed by this administration, so I don't know. How much ability you will have to uh, really um, push back, but make no mistake, this project, its scale, its use, its nature. Uh, will forever change Franklin Park, and it was not a decision that was made in collaboration with the community. Uh, as was pointed out earlier, these are environmental justice communities. You can see they aren't even here today. I don't even know this is happening. This hearing is not something that is widely advertised. The pass code wasn't listed on the website. It was listed this week as Monday, and instead it's incurring on Thursday on the website. This is not a public process, and I just want everyone to not fool yourselves to thinking that it is. Uh, the communities around this park, and we all want investment in the stadium. And fifty million dollars provided through the City of Boston's uh, public school budget is amazing, and we'd love to have that. Consideration for a fully public stadium. And the Franklin Park Action Plan, again, they made no mistake, did not talk about bringing in a private new use that would dominate the day-to-day life. Um, of the park. Uh, and I've heard people say it's just twenty Saturdays. And I think when you say just twenty Saturdays to anyone using Franklin Park today, um. It's 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 rude and dismissive. Um, this lease would be thirty years, but also you need to remember. That these kinds of changes are in fact forever for parks like these. The transportation, the commissioners here that mentioned the transportation issue, you guys are right on. Uh, this is um, absolutely impossible to manage the transportation. As has been put here, and I I actually don't know that the residential neighborhoods around this park can truly support. Um, crowds of this size in a realistic way. This project has determined that it's exempt from MIPA, so it's not doing. Those kinds of rigorous transportation analysis, and the assumptions that the transportation plan is based on. Assumes transportation use and uptake as it is at the Fenway uh, ball field. Which of course is not applicable to the reality of Franklin Park. So I know all of you, I trust all of you, we'll delve more into this. Um, again, Article ninety-seven, which is a bedrock recreational protection. We believe uh, the last judge erred, and we believe higher courts will. Use the existing precedent of Article ninety-seven that was established in a twenty seventeen case. That says that public recreation space, as your own consultants here called it today. Uh, public recreation space, um, and that's what this is. It's important not just for Franklin Park, but it's important for statewide. Land use protections, um, that you all and others stand up for public land, and I'm hopeful that you will. Thank you.
Thanks, Karen. Is Alan the next person? Is that Quana who you said?
Yes, Alan, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Right, I should, okay. Um, hi, I'm Alan Iyer. I live uh, uh, in the neighborhood of budding the park. And I probably have more work hours in the park than everyone here combined that's picking up needles, picking up trash. Running volunteer groups and so, and a lot of it's uh, been done up in the Long Crouch Woods area. And um, let's see, so I can, and I just want to let you know that. Roseanne Foley, the Executive Director of Landmarks Commission, got fired for having an opinion about um, issues like this in the city. And this was one of her issues, so um, you know, just please keep that all in mind as you um, consider your your jobs. Um, uh, let's see, so the July first comment date, July first, that's a holiday weekend. And that just shows to me, shows what a level of disrespect you have for all the the opinion of us in the community. And that that community with thousands and thousands of us are have been saying no, no, no since day one. And it's just been getting bigger and bigger. This proposal since January first has gotten bigger and bigger and virtually always. You know, and it's funny, you you talk about the summer use of the park, but you know, there's winters, seven months a year. Where there are no leaves on the trees. You don't show that, any views of this monstrosity in our park um, in the winter. Um, Article ninety-seven, the attorney was discussing that, you know, that was. There was, that required just compensation when the land of the. White Stadium or the trust land was uh, acquired. That that happened under Article ninety-seven, and we still see the shadows of Article ninety-seven in the abutting communities. And so I I completely don't believe that there's um, there's been any just compensation, and I think this is sort of a redux of that whole. Um, just disgusting um, thing that happened. And um. So this is a pro soccer stadium with a lot of high school stuff that's been brought on since they first rolled it out. And you know, if you look, you came out, you talked about the Balance Stadium. And we finally saw a really useful drawing, which is the section through the east and west clam or east and west grandstands. And I finally, I knew something was wrong with this, and I, when I saw that, I looked, and if you go up into those grandstands. You can't see the track, the eight eight-lane four-hundred-meter track that we're told is so critical to this. You go up there, you look right over it, you can see across to the other side, but you can't see right underneath you. Um, there's some, there's about eight hundred seats on the BPS side where you will be able to. But the thousands and thousands and thousands of other seats won't see this this track. Um, you know, and. I think that's just, it's absolutely disgusting. I don't know, I I imagine there's folks who know this because. Sightlines are critical in sports venues, you know, we know about the polls at Fenway Park and the and Boston Garden. And you know, we're taking this, you know, this is a a stadium you can turn the lights out on. What we're looking at now is a seven AM to ten PM all week long operation with all the trucks. And you know, all the buses. the trucks and, you know, all the buses that we're told are going to be arriving with schoolchildren. But, you know, we can't even afford buses for school trips now. You know, so this is a bag job, in my opinion, you know, people have lost their jobs for having opinions of it. You know, I think it should, it should be an amateur stadium. I think if the city should go back and look at what you could do with their $50 million. And, you know, we're, we're just getting going on this because we're going to, we're going to stop this.
We're going on time. Thank you. Quana, sorry, do you see any other hands raised?
No, there's no other hands raised at this time.
Okay, seeing no other hands raised, is there anything else for the commissioners that they want to follow up on, any other questions before we adjourn? Seeing none, I will make a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Commissioner Berndt. That will conclude today's monthly hearing for the Boston Parks Commission. We have taken notes with the error with a passcode and making sure that is rectified for future meetings, so we make sure we don't check that off. And thank you all for joining us today and hope you have a great rest of the day. Thank you.
Ms. Dixon?
Carrie?
Yes. Can you get your email address so that if I have any spelling clarifications, I can email you directly?
Certainly, I'll communicate to you offline. Thank you.